So why don't we, I think can join hopefully, but why don't we call to order? I'll call the Concord School Committee meeting to order and note that we are being recorded and broadcast via Zoom.
Bring the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee meeting to order. And we are moving immediately into executive session. Concord School Committee and the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose two of the open meeting law, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And purpose three of the open meeting law, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, legating position of the public body and return to open session at approximately 5:00 P.M.
Do we have a motion as such for both committees?
So move for both.
Second for both.
A roll call, which we should have done to open the meeting, I suppose.
Oh, yeah.
So why don't we do that real quick? Rainey?
Present.
Booth?
Present.
Out.
Present.
Wilson?
Present.
Johnston, present, and Anderson.
Present.
Now, roll call for executive session. Wilson?
Aye.
Booth?
Aye for both.
Out.
Aye for both.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Johnston, aye for both.
Okay, so just as a comment, I know we have one observer, so I'll speak directly to Terry, but for anybody else who's watching broadcasting, we are going into the executive session. The public part of the meeting will begin at 5:00.
Terry, now, Eric.
Like we have, I think the number is holding steady. Why don't we get going? We've already called both meetings into session. We're now returning from executive session. So I don't know if we officially need to, but we'll bring the Concord School Committee meeting back into order from the executive session.
And the Concord Carolina Regional School Committee meeting back to order.
Great, so thanks to everyone who's here. As many know this, hopefully will be a shorter abbreviated meeting as we weren't originally supposed to meet, but we do want to do some follow-up on the testing question that we've all been looking at, as well as a quick look at some town meeting articles. So first quickly, if there are any public comments, we'll take those. For anyone who hasn't joined a meeting before, if you'd like to make a comment, use the raise your hand button, and we will scroll through our list here and see if there are any raised hands. And then we'll ask you, when you make your comment, to turn your video on if possible, and to state your name and address for the record. So let's see, just looking for any raised hands. I don't see any yet, anybody else?
Don't say anything.
I don't see any, okay. Moving right along then, we will get right into our report on COVID testing. So last time we were debating testing options, and Laurie, I know you have looked into the options and gotten us some more detail and have some information for us, so I'll hand it over to you.
Yeah, a lot of what I have is just in a little more, a little bit of a summary of things you've heard. I can't have a ton, a great deal of new information. I can screen share this, though, so we can all see it. What I tried to do was summarize where we are with the different vendors. I also tried to capture the state options, and I think it's a starting point to the conversation. Again, I don't think there's a lot here that we haven't already spoken about, but it'll put it in one place rather than in piecemeal fashion. So this, let me just, this is an overview by company that I've had contact with, and then I've added on what we've, what the state's been continuing to roll out and our work up until now with Emerson. So the Broad Institute, which was our first discussion point back months ago, at least it feels that way, I think it was. We've been working through CIC, which is the company that liaisons to Broad, and they've actually liaised on with a couple of, at least one of these other companies with us, too. It's a nasal swab, PCR test. They've proposed weekly. I think I have to qualify all the proposals for how frequent, based on the fact that we get to have feedback on that. But Broad did propose a weekly test of everyone at about $50 per test. All of these have a 24 to 48-hour turnaround. We've only been talking with vendors that are in that frame, timeframe. Ginkgo Bioworks is a saliva pool test of four to five people at a time. Their recommendation was a family unit because if you had a positive in the home, you'd quarantine everyone anyway, so a natural connection to that determination of the unit. Their current rate, again, they had talked with us about possibly testing the staff for free. That never came together. The $80 per pool is their current rate. They had been expecting that the grant, they've got a large federal grant to help subsidize future testing. I don't, I can't say how confirmed this is, but they had hoped that their, their fees would go to $30 per pool sometime in October. JCM Analytics, whom we most recently spoke to, another saliva pool, a larger one, when I spoke to him over the weekend, he said they normally work with 10 to 12 people. They don't automatically go to the 20. I didn't get as far to understand if that was a long-term place we could stay, but it's, it's on the lower end there, the 10 to 12, instead of the 20 we thought it was last week. They are proposing every other week testing of everyone with a range of $200 to $300 per year, depending on those ancillary services that we utilize from them. I think that's worth noting. Broad and Ginkgo have different levels of service. Broad has actually the least. They provide the tests, but they don't provide the medical folks you would need to collect the tests or even the transport to get them back. So JCM Analytics is the full package and Ginkgo's in between. Software is also included in some of these, but not all. Ginkgo and JCM include the software, so the results come to you in a certain way. Broad's is a little more raw, and I could get more detail on that. I don't think that's the pivotal piece of the decision-making. Stop the Spread is the current DPH rollout of testing sites across the state, primarily located in geographic hotspots. Anyone can go. It doesn't, you don't have to be a resident at all of them. Some of them, stop, we have to be a resident of that community. Some of them are broader. They are free. DPH, DPH mobile testing centers are the most recent piece the state's added, that the school and community is going to have access to those mobile centers. Should we become a hotspot? And I know, I think Susan's on this call. She talked with them a little bit to understand what that meant. Probably that means, say you had a pool of 20 people and you had a positive, and that, probably that's not a hotspot, because that could be as low as one case. If you had two pools, start to flag as positive, I think that might be where the threshold would go. Susan and I are on a call, combined DESI DPH call tomorrow about the mobile testing centers. So we'll have more information after that call. And then I did include the, Emerson's been just amazing in supporting us, and Deb's here as chair of the Board of Health, but also as an Emerson physician. Can't thank enough the administrators there who are literally at my beck and call right now, because we're just sharing the community partnership. We know that they're doing in combination, Emerson's using their own in-house testing and Broad. So we know that their testing is a quick turnaround, which is great. We know that if we send people to their urgent care centers, symptomatic people are getting in fairly, quite efficiently and getting quick test results. So we've just had a nice relationship with them, that we've got some options to send people when they have symptoms. We believe, you know, we believe pretty strongly insurance is covering the symptomatic people. It's a wide range of what's happening for asymptomatic people when they get tested. So that's, that's the overview of the discussions. I think we've literally had a discussion after each one of these almost, so I thought putting it all together would be helpful, so we could see all of the options in one place.
Laurie, would you be, would you be kind enough to review for us? Broad is lab work only? And the, the one-stop operation is, is which one, Ginkgo or JCM? Tell us again.
JCM is the full package if you're at the $300 per year mark.
Okay.
Including the medical piece.
Thank you.
And a quick question before I forget it, and I wanted to make a high-level comment, but the quick question, Laurie, on that one at the every other week, is that something, is the every other week kind of a number of tests that we could use however we wanted? Say, for instance, earlier in the year, test weekly or, or do, you know, rotating groups instead of all at once, or something like that? Or is it just everyone every other week? We don't know that.
I,
Of course, that's a question I didn't think to ask last time.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't asked him that, obviously. They want to be flexible, but they've also tried to put a structure together.
Okay.
You know, I did ask, you had asked me to follow, at least this is what I inferred you were asking me. I asked him if he could do a one-stop, a one-time testing at the beginning of the school year, say. They definitely are not structuring their, their testing around that kind of an operation. So it seems like they're, they're looking for that kind of a pattern.
They're looking for a long-term.
I suspect they would say probably that's not the way they go. They're looking for, I did tell you last time, and I didn't put it on the chart, that they would be willing to onboard districts with a six-week timeframe, $50 or so, and then we'd be billed monthly with a 60-day exit clause. So it's, it's longer term, but it's not the whole school year kind of thing. The others are more, because they're per test, it's, you're not paying upfront for things in the future.
Right, okay. Laurie, and sorry, I was just gonna comment before we all get into all of this, and we can go into more detail on it or not, but since we don't, we didn't have actual correspondence on here, but I just wanted to mention that we have gotten correspondence over the past couple of days regarding this. So just since it's related to this discussion, I want to bring it up. We did get five different emails related to testing in different directions, but one of the, four of them were, were expressing concerns and sharing reasons not to test. One of them was in favor, but it was signed by a long list of people. I'm afraid I didn't count, actually, but it's probably up there around 50 people at least, if not more. So I just wanted to share that we have those, and we have them on record. So, and we have all read those emails, the thoughts and concerns for both directions, so. Given all of that, what, what other kind of questions does, does everybody have here?
Well, Heather and Laurie, I know when we've discussed this before, one of the comments from the health representatives who have been joining us, thank you, has been that all data is useful. But I also note that even our own hospital, which has perhaps large populations every day, too, of course they do, as with other hospitals have chose not to do testing, even though they are effectively large and public sites. I wish I could say there's a rubric or a decision-making criteria that would somehow make this discussion simple, and notwithstanding Laurie's table and all the work that resulted in generating the table, it's not getting easier for us or for any other institution. Nonetheless, I want to drill down a little bit and ask this question. We've got pools of either a family unit or as many as 10 people. We have the issue of false paws and false neg, although generally the tests are rather accurate. But can you play out a scenario for us, if you've heard it, this would go to Dr. Simon or Health Director Susan Rasp, or you, Dr. Hunter? In a, imagine a case where one or two pools does prove positive. What would happen next? I think we can imagine that we've doing so isolating and some tracking, but what do we do to dive back into that pool, and how long does that take? Because presumably, we've got to then do the next level of testing, and we've got to do it somewhat, somewhat rapidly, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you have a pool of people that test positive in the saliva pool, I think we went over this last week, then everyone gets an individual test, as I understand, and then, you know, you know, I think it would depend if it's a family unit, or if it's, you know, 10 random students in a classroom, you know, whether or not those people have to be on quarantine for a certain amount of days or not. So that would be the next, the next step.
Doing those tests and where?
I'm sorry, I missed that one?
Oh, sorry. So then who would do those tests and where? Would the onus then become on the family to go find a testing site?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like either they do that, or if the, if JCM or Ginkgo or whatever would do the follow-up tests. I'm not sure.
But Laurie, that doesn't seem to be included, as far as you understand, in their program?
No.
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 And then Court, can I just address the first point you made about, something about the hospital not testing? Is, what did you mean by that?
Well, what I meant was that in my own very novice level of research, I find that universities with resources are doing significant amount of testing. But many large health institutions like hospitals are not screening every visitor other than screening that more or less equates with our own screening, self-screened by individuals.
Well, let me update you on that. You cannot walk into the hospital without being stopped by a security guard and, you know, being asked questions and getting your hands washed and putting on a mask. So all visitors are screened, and no one's allowed in if they are positive for COVID, you know, as a visitor, positive for COVID, or, you know, at risk. All the staff members fill out an app, find an app every day that checks your symptoms, and none of the staff, physicians, whatever, also are stopped at the door, wash their hands, put on a mask, and go in. And so, you know, if you're questioning why hospitals aren't screening their own people, it's because, I mean, I'm, we're in PPE all day long, and we, you know, don't go in to see anyone without all our garb. So I, you know, I think it's, you know, we're pretty good about, you know, testing staff members and physicians and nurses who are either exposed or have symptoms, but it's not, you know, considered necessary to test, you know, asymptomatic people on a regular basis who are sort of protected to begin with.
And that's exactly my point. I was trying to draw, I was trying to draw as a comparison, the, the fact that the schools thus far have not required testing of people entering schools any more than hospitals have required testing of asymptomatic people. Instead, both kinds of institutions at the present time appear to be using self-reporting and a compliance with rules around hygiene as a way to reduce possibility for transmission.
Well, just to back up, every patient that gets admitted to the hospital gets tested for COVID, whether or not they have symptoms or not. Any patient coming in for an elective surgery or procedure, endoscopy, gets tested. So there are a significant number of people getting tested who are in the hospital. I, you know, I think to sort of equate that with what's going on in the schools is really misleading.
Okay, all right. Nonetheless, the vast majority of people right now walking in either door are required to do a self-report. That, that part, I believe, is still true. I just wanted to make that, test my understanding of that.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question for Laurie, if I may. First, first a comment, because right now Massachusetts is actually, is actually conducting asymptomatic, asymptomatic testing for asymptomatic people, and anyone can get that test. It is specifically done. The program Stop the Spread is specifically done for return to work, return to school, return from travel, and it's completely free. It takes, and I have taken the test on a couple of occasions. It really takes one to two days for the results to arrive securely, and there's no minimum for age of the testing subject. So children can be tested. It took me, last time, it took me less than 30 minutes to get the test administered for free. So Massachusetts is conducting public health response to COVID through testing. And as Laurie said, symptomatic patients will always have access to, to testing, and it's covered under CARES Act. All of the expenses are covered for free, so that is, that is part of that response, which means that more people will actually access those services. They will go to the doctor. They will get tested because it doesn't cause them, or it shouldn't cause them anything when they're exhibiting symptoms, and that goes for children as well. My question to Laurie is, is there any public health department, state, DESI, or any other public health department that is requiring right now, public schools to, to conduct testing? Or is that, is this done at, at any Massachusetts schools right now? Other than colleges that have students coming back, coming to, to campuses from all over the country, including the, the places of hot zones, other states, so.
So I don't have a formal response to that, other than what I hear through my colleagues, which last, we spoke, which would have been late last week, there was still a lot of wish list items in terms of testing. People in other districts, leaders in other districts, still trying to figure out how they might accomplish this. I don't know of anyone who's required it yet. I'm, so I don't think anyone has. The state certainly hasn't been helpful in this endeavor, and I don't know that any other district has gotten past the same exact things we've been stuck with in terms of logistics and cost and approach and all of the variables. So, so as far as I know, no. I will say we are probably one of the first to reopen, so we, we may, it will be interesting to see if over the next week, when a lot of schools really start to open up next week, if anyone manages to put it in place before they open. But not that I know of.
I don't know of any towns that are requiring it.
And private schools, yeah, sorry, private schools have been open at least for a couple of weeks already, and they're not requiring it either.
Some, some are. I know one in town is, and at least one outside of town I've had, heard from. So there are, there are little bits of private school doing some testing.
And Laurie, the one that's requiring it, at what interval are they testing?
I don't know if Susan knows more, because you're working with all of us here in town.
So, you know, it's a boarding school, so they have a, they, they, they can't have an outbreak on campus because they, it would just be a very bad thing if they did. So they've had everybody tested before they came back. They have international students and kids from all over the country. Everybody had to be a negative test before they came back, then they were tested once they got on campus. And I believe they're going to be tested either every week or two through at least September or October, but I think they're going to see how it goes. They just, I'm sure you can understand why they can't have an outbreak on a campus and have kids sick that they have to take care of.
I'd like a college.
Right, right.
Laurie, Susan, and Deborah as well. If we looked at options a week from now, are they going to be the same? Or are we regionally and in Massachusetts still in a ramp-up mode for COVID testing?
A ramp-up mode of, like, finding out about testing, or a ramp-up mode of increasing cases of COVID?
No, 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 ramp-up mode for testing, meaning more capacity, more, more labs, more firms, more solutions. We have three of them in front of us now that are private, and we have then, should there be cases, the state intervention, timing unknown, because they have a certain capacity that has to get put against whatever's happening in the state at any given day. But in terms of just private capacity for labs to come our way and offer services, do you believe that's going to expand? This is getting, is this going to get easier or harder for school districts as they, as Laurie say, says, continue to open and continue to work on this?
I mean, I'll give you my anecdotal take after talking with three of the vendors and CIC, who's the company that works, you know, liaisons with us to them. You know, there's clearly a growing interest in the biotech world to get this moving faster and bigger and to more capacity. I think what we've seen to different degrees, Broad being, I think, the most solid, and the other two really wanting to do this, and yet, you know, maybe being in a much earlier starting point, and, you know, to the point where Ginkgo could not execute on the hope to cover free testing for all the staff. You know, I think in terms of JCM, and they're, they've been talking with districts, but they haven't actually executed on anything. And Susan and I, you know, have been researching questions Susan had early, and I know one of the parents have brought up of just where their labs are and FDA approval, and I think we got comfortable with parts of that, but they're not actually doing it. So I expect there will be more and more options. All of them have said to me, this is going to continue and evolve. And CIC, who actually has, you know, isn't in the business other than to connect these companies, you know, they're predicting six months out, something different and cheaper might be available. So I, why wouldn't it keep evolving, right? There's a concerted desperate need to continue to grow options, and there's, let's name it, right, a business motivation to do so. And I think, you know, hopefully that will be the case. It's been encouraging at least to see the state rolling out more options. They are reactive options rather than proactive options, which I say, I think where we get a little, that's some of the conflict we're feeling. So yeah, I think things have evolved. It's been six months, and we're able to give you a list of options that we certainly wouldn't have had three months ago. But is there a perfect option? Clearly not. And is it beyond frustration that it's at a district level, we're having this conversation? Extraordinarily frustrating. This should be at a much higher level about all of the kids in Massachusetts, not just the ones in Concord and Carlisle. But anyway, so yeah, I think Court, it will continue to expand, and we just don't know what that future will, will, will have.
Dr. Simon laid out the Emerson protocols, and our roadmap has our own protocols. You've got only a tiny bit of data, Laurie. Does your data from opening this week thus far suggest that compliance is at a high level?
Do we have? For a process, for a process that is brand-new and only, only able to be planned, as well as it can be planned, until some, until the masses are using it. We have felt quite pleased with the response rate. Do we have work to do so that we have everyone completing the screeners and the processes to do the follow-up? Yeah, we're still, we're still building that, but overall, we, it's been two days, not even two, for the older kids and families. So it was an encouraging start, and people are taking, I have to say, this community's taking all of it very seriously, so we just have to get habits in place. The one other thing I think, but it's worth mentioning when we talk about families getting told to follow up on testing, we are actively already doing that with symptomatic kids. That started the day before school opened in terms of, if you're calling to tell us you've got a fever the day before, you are not welcome back here without a negative COVID test and 24 hours symptom-free. So I want to be sure. So I want to be sure you understand, we are already actively sending families off for COVID tests and staff. That's already happened in the last two days. So I just want to be sure everybody's aware that that is part of our protocol already. It's different, I understand, than when a pool flags, but it is part of the protocol that's already actively in place.
And as a practical measure, you expressed to me, and I think you should share it with the committee and the community, that at the present time, you believe that you've got the building-based capacity to do this kind of communication with families.
Sure, the screening part, we're working on some automated reminders. That's going to happen as early as tomorrow, perhaps. So that before, before school, there's an automated reminder, and then right after school opens, there's another one. So the number gets smaller and smaller in terms of who we need to humanly contact. So we're closing in on that, and the nurses are going to be handling the yes responses for any families that are students that seem symptomatic and make sure they are not in school. And I will be working with the principals as to any staff in that category. So we're tightening it up every day. I think by next week, we'll be in great shape.
I have a question, oh, Court. I have a question. I think it's for either Dr. Green or Susan Rask. And this has to do with the benefit or lack thereof of interval testing and what that interval is. Do we have good data on how long from infection to peak contagion in an individual? What that timeframe is, and then from infection to symptomatic?
My understanding is that people can be asymptomatic and transmit disease, particularly children. I have Mike Mina's data from Harvard School of Public Health. So the incubation period, five days, correct me if I'm wrong, Susan. And transmissible virus would be picked up around day five for that. So.
Yeah, that's pretty much what I've heard. Usually it's an incubation period of about five days. When we do contact tracing, we will trace back forty-eight hours before the person either was symptomatic or tested positive, since there's some evidence that you're infectious before you're symptomatic. Some people are, anyway.
Yeah, it's similar to influenza. You can be contagious and transmit disease, but be very asymptomatic with influenza as well. So viruses are very tricky.
So, Dr. Green, if I have it right, incubation, more or less five days. And the, is it true that the asymptomatic contagious period can be typically two days of that five days? Do I get that right?
I think, I mean, I think the thought is that it can be a five-day incubation. Certainly, it could be less. And I think, you know, for all sort of practical purposes, like Susan said, that when they're doing contact tracing, they're going back forty-eight hours before a symptom starts. That seems like a reasonable, agreed upon timeframe with DPH and CDC. So, you know, I'm not sure I can weigh in on that more than what people have been doing.
And we all know, based on research, we know a little bit about, and you know a lot about, Dr. Green, this virus is very capricious.
Yeah.
So given that five-day contact to transmissible level, whole-scale testing that has intervals longer than that, and the longer it is from that, is really just opening up significant holes in the ability for this to be of the kind of benefit that we think we'd like to see. And I would love to be able to know that there's no COVID in the schools every day. But unless we are going to test every four or five days, and it'd have to be something like every three days, it takes you forty-eight hours to get a test back, four of twenty-four, twenty-four seems to be the minimum. You're, you're not creating an environment, a process because we are so porous, which I mentioned every time I talk about this, there's forty-two hundred people who are going home every night. Unless you're going to test with that regularity, you're not creating anything here that is going to give us anything other than a slight percentage better chance of not having good, you're going to somewhat be subject to luck if you catch a case doing this before it infects anybody.
And we're talking, Wally, we're talking about testing every single person in school, including the educators, every three to four days, every single one of them.
I think that's what you'd do to create a
Right.
a wall.
And continuing through the, the, all the months that we are open.
Yeah, I'm not proposing that.
That's, I mean, no, no one is able to do that. How would you? I just think that's not realistic.
No, even
In any scenario.
Right. So I guess my point is, I continue to think as, as much as we want some assurance, some comfort here, we don't have the means to provide the comfort. We have the means to contact trace. We have the means to provide opportunity for parents to diligently let us know what their kids are experiencing, and for the teachers to let us know what they're experiencing on a daily basis before they come to the building. But I just, I have yet to see anything that indicates to me that we are doing anything other than creating a false comfort for our, for our ability to know that that we have, we are aware of whether or not there's COVID in our buildings.
Well, I think, you know, what is, what is your goal here? Like, what are the goals of testing? You know, do you want to reassure the teachers who are, you know, maybe have risk factors? Do you want to reassure the teachers and the staff that they will remain healthy by keeping sick students out of class? Do you want to reassure parents that their kid who has asthma may not get COVID, or that who has a parent at home with chemotherapy, getting chemotherapy? Do you want to reassure the families of not getting COVID? Or do you want to prevent an outbreak? So, you know, you have to ask yourself what the goal is here. And I'm not sure, I understand what the goal is for what the school committee is asking. You know, I think testing on a weekly basis, which is what, you know, Dr. Mike Mina from Harris School of Public Health had advocated as the best way to reduce outbreaks, you know, would prevent an outbreak. And yes, it would keep, you know, sick kids out of schools and in the homes, and obviously reassure parents. But if your goal is, you know, just to keep all the kids healthy and everyone in the school buildings healthy, then, you know, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure what testing is really going to do. It's a lot of money for probably, you know, some period of time. And, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where we would go with all that. So.
So can I, can I just speak for a moment to sort of the outbreak scenario? Let's say we, for, in some scenario, we had three or four students in a building who are positive. I I mean, the cases we're seeing are not transmitting to other people. We're catching them early enough and doing contact tracing that I don't think, other than the nursing homes, I don't think there's been any cases in town that we know have transmitted to anybody else all summer long. So because we're catching them quickly and we're contact tracing. So let's say we had a couple of kids in a school. You're probably going to close the school for a few days to disinfect. We're going to contact trace. And if it's that many kids, we get the DPH mobile testing unit out, and then they test everybody or whoever they deem appropriate, the whole ninth grade or whatever it's going to be. I mean, I mean, I think we have a lot of tools to prevent outbreaks. Does that mean we won't get two or three kids that end up with it at the same time? I think that could happen, but I think we'll be able to stop it there.
That's reasonable.
There are a lot of states that have opened schools before us. And I haven't seen, I mean, other than LA had announced that they were going to test all like seven hundred thousand members of their community in that district. But I haven't seen any schools that have actually been doing testing either as a baseline or as a, as an ongoing entity. And there have been some publicly published spreadsheets with tracking COVID in schools. And it looks to me, from what I've seen so far, that transmission, there isn't, there are isolated cases of people testing positive. But those are people who are, it's not that then other people in their classes are testing positive, right? So they might get it playing softball, and then they stay home, like to Susan's point, right? That, that when you pull everybody out. And so is there anybody that we can look to who is using testing, or can we look to other people who are not using testing? And say they are being effective at mitigating spread just through the masks and the social distancing and all that, and through contact tracing and all of the, the public health measures that we have?
I don't think public schools are doing it because I think it's cost prohibitive. I think colleges and boarding schools are doing it because they have this population that they have to care for medically. If, if kids get sick, they can't send them home. Or they can send them home, but that has its own set of issues.
You know, one of the things to remember about colleges is they have a sunken asset that if they're not getting room fees, they're losing a significant amount of money. So they have money to work with effectively by keeping the schools open, keeping the buildings open. I mean, that's not the reason they're doing it. But it's certainly a piece of the economics. It's not like they just, oh, well, they got more money, and so they're going to do it. I think they have a vested interest keeping kids on campus and getting to a point where they can bring more kids back to campus in the spring by proving that they can keep this at bay somehow. And so there's a cost benefit equation there that we don't have.
Well, for them, it's survival. Let's be honest. Some of these colleges go out of business if they don't keep things moving in the right direction. And the same for the boarding schools. It's, I think that we can't compare ourselves to, I if there are other day-school districts that have come from isolated, you know, like fairly contained communities, or at least a fairly contained geographic spread, that we can look to, to say, who's being effective and what are they doing? And I haven't, to my, and what I've seen, have not seen anybody who's using testing to be effective. That's, that's all I'm trying to.
And colleges and boarding schools are responsible for the healthcare of their students because the students are living on campus. And like our students in public schools that are going home every day, and their families are responsible for their healthcare. And I think that helps explain why colleges are covering, doing testing also.
So
Sorry, the only thing that I have seen.
Eva, can I just get a word in? So I want to thank all the community members who sent us correspondence. They obviously were being very thoughtful and thought about this a lot, as I have. And I think if we even embark on even a one-time test, that's not enough. And I don't think we can sustain ongoing testing financially, which with the prices that we're looking at. And I think Susan Rask and Dr. Green made some excellent points about how, you know, this isn't March. We've learned so much about proper behaviors, proper protocols, contact tracing. You know, it's not like we haven't had any, you know, we haven't had zero positive, but we've been very low. And I think we jump right on it and address the issue with contact tracing. And I am happy to hear that Dr. Hunter said that, you know, we're being very strict about if you have any symptoms or fever, that you need to go get a test and test negative and be symptom-free for twenty-four hours, I believe she said. So as much as I think any of us would like to embark on testing within our two districts, I just don't think right now we could sustain the financial obligation that would be required.
No. Especially since there are the free options around, and we can encourage people to make use of those options, whether for their own, you know, peace of mind, or as a measure to, to work with the community, to, to make a peace of mind across the community. Definitely giving out that kind of information about free testing sites and about the ease of it and the turnaround time and all of that could be a good thing.
And we would still not be offering the reassurance that the families are looking for. So the investment is really not that worthwhile for the benefit that we are searching, really.
There's one word we haven't introduced tonight, but we've heard it many times before. And it's a critical part of our defense here, and that is cohorts. The ability to know the groups with whom students and teachers interact with and our degree of, what, thoroughness about that, I think is also going to prove out to be a critical factor over time. So I want us to make sure that's part of our, our equation here. And we know that the cohorting becomes, Wally, your words now, becomes more porous. Porous is not what we want. It becomes more porous as we advance in grade because of the educational necessities of high school students and multiple teachers and subjects.
And that's where the close contacts come in. My daughter in college, only twenty cases on the whole campus, and she got an email from the professor a week ago that she was in the room with one of them. And they really stuck to the six feet for more than fifteen minutes, and I was able to back that up because I spend so much time with these health professionals. And, you know, we, we actually got our anxiety down as a family, and the timeframe will be that she's not going to get sick. I'm not saying that's how we're going to manage it exactly in the schools because I'm not sure we're going to be able to be assure of that in certain settings, and maybe won't be able to say that it was definitively this group of people. But cohorting, close contacting, you know, in my perfect world, we would have ability to do exactly what some of you have said. We would have tested everyone before they came in. We do it on a weekly basis. We could never get surprised then because we would always have this ongoing flow of data and information coming to us. We keep looking and searching and searching for the option that would get us to that. And the pieces just haven't seemed to come together in a way that a public school district could manage it at this point. And that's really frustrating. But I do, I do tend to agree and say that that's where we are for today. You know, I think none of these options are off the table because tonight we don't decide to act on anything, if that's the case. We could pick up the phone and, you know, engage with any of these folks pretty immediately, I'm quite sure. So I think it's something we could revisit either at different intervals, or certainly in reaction if, if we were to get some cases. But I'm, you know, the frustration of there's just no good option here for a public school district is something I've kind of had to come to peace with. Maybe a little less the assurance as we brought people in, we've missed that window. I just feel like we've missed it. We've got kids in the buildings now. And maybe we need to put this on hold and see where we are in a few weeks. And, you know, bring it back on a regular basis. I'm fine with that. I don't think we want to talk about it every week at every meeting and kind of feel like we're stuck in the same place. Because, you know, that's not helpful either.
I think we need to wait for, some of the things that we hear are on the horizon with these super rapid tests that are very inexpensive, and they just aren't not credible yet. So I keep hearing, but I talk about them, but I don't see them. So.
Dr. Hunter, sorry, sorry. No, the people that we're looking at, we don't even know the efficacy. These are all fairly new programs. These, the analytics, the, you know, they're, they're it's not that we're really even assured that when you increase to the twenty-person pool, that your efficacy is still, you know, the accuracy is still correct. So there's So there are still a bunch of unknowns in terms of even just the tests and the collections themselves. In terms of how good is the data that you're getting?
I just wanted to add that the biggest comfort that we have is the actual numbers that we see on the dashboard. So, you know, throughout the summer, all of us, well, not all of them, but many of our students have been working or been in the public spaces. And we have not seen the rise and the outbreaks that some people might say that, you know, they would expect reading the social, social media posts. So our biggest comfort walking in through those doors is the fact that students and families are adhering to masking, are being safe, are practicing good sanitary habits. And Harvard Public Health, Health Doctor Advising this, our state has said that the most important numbers and the most important factors in safe reopening should be masking, ventilation, and your local numbers. And of course, state numbers. So these, these are the biggest factors in bringing people safely into one space. We have, as a community, we have given people an option if they don't feel safe or they have family members that may be affected. They are, they have the option of going remote. So and from what I am hearing also from the COVID Public Health Department and Callisle COVID Task Force, that there are more tests coming in a pipeline that may be costing $5. They may not be as effective, but at least you can run them. And they are so cheap that you can run them and follow up those false positives with more expensive ones. But there are options that are coming down the pipeline that might not be available at this moment. So it's not necessary, you know, to pay for, for those expensive options right now when they don't provide us real information.
I'm going to jump in with a couple of comments here, too. I can certainly see where the conversation is going. It sounds like most of the committee is leaning towards the fact that this is not really worth it. I just want to make sure that we're addressing all factors here. And I'm not necessarily trying to shift the direction, but I want to look at a couple of other lenses here. And actually, first point out, it's interesting, and I'll say right upfront, I came into this feeling like any testing is better than nothing. I tend to look at this relatively conservatively, whether that fits in or not, I don't know. And we've heard from the health professors, Dr. Green and then Susan Rask, that to some extent, any information is information and useful. That said, it was interesting reading the emails that we did get from people. And as I looked back at through them in detail, they disagreed in terms of whether recommending testing or not. But in a way, didn't disagree as much as you would think because both said to be effective, effective, you need to test regularly. And I think that becomes the crux of this issue here clearly that we've all gotten to. It's about interval. And I'm, I'm hearing what everybody's saying about the fact that if we don't have a short interval, interval, it doesn't have the value. Susan, the fact that you're talking, your point about stopping outbreaks via contact tracing makes a big difference. I see that in terms of a way to stop contact outbreaks. So I guess I'm getting more comfortable with that. And I understand the, the risk of false confidence and everything. I still though, have a little bit of feel of, of a little information is better than no information. So I guess I just want to throw out there. And it actually echoes something that the, the letter signed by many people, and I still haven't gone back to count it, it's 50 to 100 people, points out, which is they're asking us to test regularly, but closed by saying, if not regularly, please at least do a one time test. So I want to return to this concept for a second. I know, Lori, you just said, you know, likely we missed our window. And that might be the case, but I want to throw this out. And Dr. Green or Susan Rask, see, see your thoughts on this. Have we missed the window for a one time test? And the flip side of that, is there any value to that? Should we be, should we be talking about a one time test even here and looking at that as an option?
I don't know, it's an interesting question. You know, I think you could, you know, see what happens over the month of September and consider a one time test in October. And just as the weather gets cooler and people are moving indoors. And we've had a month to circulate kids around schools. You know, would be, you know, we may have a few positive cases in the schools by then. And, and, you know, you might, you might want to kind of just get an assessment of, of who's out there asymptomatic, infecting away, so.
Yeah, I mean, let, let's say we had one case and we take care of that case. And then the next week we have another case. And then the next week we have another case. Let's say for purposes of discussion, it's all in high school kids. I, what do you think, Dr. Green, at that point? Is there some benefit in testing all the high school kids?
Yeah, I would, I would say that. I mean, I get that everyone here is sort of hesitant to, to test widely and regularly. I get that it's a cost. But, you know, I think if you defer it at this meeting, I would hope that you would reconsider it. And it may turn out to be the scenario that Susan's talking about where there's a trickle of cases. And then we want to just kind of get a really good look at what's, what's in our schools. You know, it may reassure, reassure us that, wow, it was just a couple of kids and no big deal. We can handle it. But there may, it may also alert us that there's a bigger problem there. And that maybe we really do need to revisit the issue of regular testing.
But Lori, so if, is the best offer on the table for individual tests still $50 a test? So the baseline test would be a $210,000 investment? Is that correct?
Correct.
That's a lot.
There is a free option.
Yeah, but you can't do the free option because that requires individuals to go take their kids there. And it's not going to, it doesn't, it doesn't work. It's too, it's not uniform. You can't force people to do this, at least if we're testing kids on site. You get a full test, but.
Well, but, but you could target it to one school if you had to, if it looks like, you know, let's say we have three or four sequential cases in a school that we don't think are connected. But you're still troubled that you had three or four cases in one school in a few weeks. I mean, you could just test that school and you could use the pooled saliva test and do it every week for three or four weeks for something like $50 a kid. I mean, like, it would be $200,000 to do that. But it, it might let you get a handle on what's going on in that one school building.
And Susan, if you saw that scenario, might you contact us, contact us? Recommend that we have that discussion very quickly?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's why we have a public health nurse. She's on top of it, I'm on top of it. You know, and, and the state does not, DPH does not want this kind of stuff going on in schools either. I mean, and that's why they're activating the mobile testing unit. So if I were to call them up, I mean, I mean, if we get more than one case in a school, we're going to be talking to the epidemiologists as often as we need to talk to them, saying, what do you think we should do? What's, we, we can't connect these cases. What's your best thought on how to react? And then we call in the mobile testing unit if we can't get it figured out.
Yeah, I mean, there's such a regular flow. I had Tricia, our public health nurse, she called DPA for me today about something. So we're in 24/7 contact here at this point. So certainly a few cases starting to pop up. We're going to respond really quickly.
Right.
So we do have, the mobile testing is a free option that is provided by state. And who, in the case that we do not use the state option and we go with a private option and spend the $200,000 on one time testing if more cases show up, who would be in charge of the public health response? Is there, do we have a hired, other than the nurse who does the contact tracing? Do we have an epidemiologist that we hired? I'm looking at colleges and they have teams of doctors, there are paid doctors, they're not volunteers, but they are paid doctors, they're epidemiologists, there are people that do testing. So it's, they have actual teams deployed to that because they are doing surveillance. They are in a different situation than a public school is. So if we're not picking the free option of mobile testing, if we start seeing a string, if we want to take it upon ourselves, who's going to be in charge of that?
So the, the, the Health Division and the Board of Health and our public health nurse will work with the Department of Public Health and their epidemiologists. I'm, I'm confident we will get all the support we need from the State Department of Public Health Epidemiologists. Like they have a whole large team of people devoted to COVID at this point. And they are literally a phone call away.
They've been very responsive. We've, we've engaged with them multiple times already, so.
So I want to just kind of summarize where we are here for a minute. It sounds to me like the general feels, most of the committee members, is that we should not pull the trigger on any of this right now. Let's wait a little bit and see how things go. If we start to have, like Susan said, maybe some type of trickle effect in a school where we feel like we need to do a, a one time test either in a building or throughout the district, we could look at it at that point. If other things happen, obviously, at any time, we can pick up this discussion in another few weeks and we look at it to see if we need regular testing in a specific building or for the whole area. But that for right now, we kind of press pause and don't do any of it at this point because of the fact that we can't do it regularly enough to make it feel effective. Does that feel like an accurate summary? Okay. General nodding and not really.
Yeah, that's, that's my sense of it. And we're also hearing that we've, we would thereby have the resources to move very quickly if we had several unconnected, seemingly unconnected cases in a building.
Right.
We would not be committing today or this week to a testing commitment that far exceeds our capacity to, to, to make that, make that commitment. And we haven't even talked about money yet. But the, the options in front of us now would not enable us to have a school district that looks like it does right now. Our monies are committed for instruction right now. That doesn't mean that, that health doesn't transcend every other thing that's important to us. Rather, I'm hearing that we can move very quickly if we see something happening in a building. And if we see something happening in the community and we want to respond regularly at a school or regularly at a district level, we may have options more within this community's reach than we do right now.
Yes, and clearly the funding is, I think, intrinsic to this conversation. When we talk, when we're talking about interval, if funding weren't an issue, I think we'd all say, great, let's do a big test of everyone and then do it every three days. And clearly, that's not an option financially. So, so that's certainly part of this discussion, whether we've debated the individual's costs much or not. I, I would just offer a flip side to that. And this is my personal opinion here, that I do feel that if, if we and the community feel that this really is a priority, I think the community would likely be willing to participate in this. And if we needed to fundraise to support some testing, I think we could. I'm not saying that we should try to fundraise to support every three day testing because that, that's a little beyond reasonable even. So I just want to put it out there that if at some point, as we, you know, if we return to this in three or four weeks and we're looking again and feel like it's necessary, then I think we want to keep that in mind, that there's a possibility that if it feels more urgent, that the community will jump in. So just for that. And the other thing I just want to comment, although I summarized what I think I'm hearing from everybody, I think I'm probably the one somewhat, not completely dissenting, but somewhat dissenting opinion to that. And so I guess I just want to state where I am, which is that I, I do still tend to feel that a little more information is better than not having it. I completely understand the reasons not to, that everybody's, that everybody's speaking. And, and I will support the committee direction to not do this right now. But I guess I want to make sure that going forward, we are open to looking at it again if, if more need or reason arises. And also that we're, that we're ready and keeping an eye on, you know, pricing and how testing availability is changing because of, if availability and funding are significantly different three weeks from now, that could, I think, change the discussion.
Yeah, I just, you know, want to also just voice my opinion in conclusion. Obviously, I have no financial stake in the game in any of these testing places, you know, even the Emerson sites. But, you know, I would, you know, if, if there's no money to test, if there's no money in the school budget to test, then, you know, I don't know what we'd be doing the past two meetings, you know, discussing options. Because if, if people are going to sort of talk themselves out of testing based on saying that, well, we don't think it's that worthwhile, then, you know, so be it. But I would strongly urge you to reconsider testing if cases start to ramp up. Call me cynical, but I do not have great faith in the state to come to our rescue. I think it's the resources of the state are going to go to, you know, more city populations, more densely populated areas. I, I have a hard time believing the state's going to come to the rescue of Concord, Massachusetts. And the last thing I will say is that I work in the emergency department. I have seen sick patients. It is bad. It was bad in the spring and I do not want to see it again. So, you know, I hope that this continues to be a conversation about testing. And like Heather said, I think we can get community response to funding. But do not blow this off. Keep it, keep it on the table for discussion.
I, I think that, you know, the exercise of, of talking through all of this where we as a group are deciding what's the thinking about, what, what is the objective of testing? What are the possibilities of testing? What are the possible gains of testing? I don't think that this was a futile effort, you know, and the conversations that we've had these past couple of meetings are not, it's, if, I think, the feeling is, maybe I'm speaking, you know, at least for myself, I think that if there was a certain advantage, if there was some identifiable result that we could get from the testing capability, from the testing, given the capabilities and given the options that we know right now, I think we would try to find the resources to get there. The question is, if you're not certain even if you're going to meet your goals of testing, do you, do you stretch around to try to find the resources? I think that it's the kind of thing where we keep an eye open. We, we stay on top of everything. And we know that we need to respond. And having these conversations, we know our options of how to respond, at least given right now. And we, and we, we know what we hope to get from a, a response.
Yeah, I think, thinking back on Sarah's point, it's, I think that if there was an option on the table that had weekly testing or even with greater frequency, regardless of what the cost was, that would be a far different conversation than we're having. But I think, you know, to do something and invest an extraordinary sum of money into not doing something properly, that's where I sort of veer off and think, you know, this is not exactly what we want yet. But to Court's point, too, when there are new companies and new programs coming online every day, I think, yeah, we just, we keep it on the radar. Lori, I know you're doing it, so.
You know, I will continue to.
Yes, I sure do.
Oh, we have things we have to get done and we have a hard stop at seven. And I, we're not going to make any decisions tonight, I don't think. So I think I would ask that we move forward on our agenda. And you know, there are, I have comments I would like to make, but I'm not going to make them. And this would be my last opportunity to do so. All of you will have opportunities.
In that light, I think you're right. We, we in a way did make a decision. We decided not to do anything for now. And we can always come back to it. But before we move on to. Uh, but before we move on to the next topic, let's just thank Dev and Susan again for being here, your
Anytime.
Your presence and your thoughts and input the last couple of meetings have been so incredibly helpful, um, so we all really appreciate you being here.
Sure, anytime.
Anytime.
Dr. Green.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks. I'll get out of here.
Our next item is uh the town meeting warrant articles. And I think there were two, and I I don't have a warrant in front of me, I hope somebody does, but um, I see Cynthia fast running through ours. I think the two that we want to at least consider whether we want to take a position on are uh the Brian Folds article on.
Article thirty.
Article thirty. And the other is, and this is more controversial for us to do something about, so I'm just going to tee it up this way, because I've done this before, and I'm still alive to talk about it. Um, the the article for Junction Village, um, which is really town's only way to avoid being in forty B violation territory. Does have ramifications for the schools. Um, if we if the town chooses not to offer the TIF to the developer and the developer walks away, and we don't know if he will or not, but if they walk away, um, it is very likely that we will be uh a town that could have a forty B development in it.
Do one at a time?
Well, I mean, I just even I'm just going to bring it up this way so that we can then decide to talk about it or not. Um, so it's very likely that it will have a adverse effect uh or not an adverse effect, I don't like to describe it that way. It will have an effect on the number of students coming to our doors. Um, and depending upon how many of those happen, then we may have a crowding situation. Um, be the only reason that I think we would take it up, I I sort of advise against taking a position on it. Uh, but I think it's valuable for us to just mention it uh in public so that people understand the connection, because oftentimes I don't know that that connection gets made. It's a similar reason, and I would recommend you continue to do this whenever there has been a fifty-five-plus community on the table. Uh, I've made an effort to go to the various meetings that happen and just ask for a uh a moratorium on, I think that's where it worked, but no kids under no, no school-aged children residing full-time in those developments as a stipulation of their documents. And so far, people have been willing to do that. Because at the time, I was over fifty-five and had three kids at school.
So Wally, this is eighty units of assisted housing, all of which would uh be considered uh uh for uh low-income status, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly the the statute statutory approach to the to the uh entry based on financial means, so I'm careful about how to describe it, I'm not a
Okay.
Not that up to speed on what the project is. Um, well, that's not true, I'm not that up to speed on some of those particulars.
And the assessed valuation of the property goes up when the developer brings in a twenty-million-dollar uh complex, and that new valuation then is lessened by virtue of the TIF, the tax incentive financing, I guess it's called, uh such that the town foregoes some of the taxable value, the majority of the taxable value for a period of time um in order to make it possible for this developer to move ahead with this kind of project that as you led with uh uh it takes Concord out of the crosshairs of forty forty B pressures for an indefinite period of time.
Yes.
Okay.
There are a lot of other issues around this that
Mm-hmm, it's not simple, yeah.
And, uh, you know, some that people vote on, uh, you know, purely uh as a matter of conscience. Um, and they should do what they want to do, I just, and I again, I just think that we owe it to the public to and just to draw the line, draw the connection between this and uh, you know, the potential for an increase in the number of students in schools, and just leave it there. Uh, they can make their own judgments based on that.
So one one question, Wally, for you or anybody else, remind me, was it the FinCom that hosted the hearing that provided the recent uh
I think it was a select board.
It was a select board, I'm sorry, last week's select board.
We're talking about the latest breaking details.
Fine, right, so that's a resource for us and anybody who's interested in addition to other resources about this.
Also, Wally, can we just spell out that connection clearly for anybody who's not familiar with forty B regulations? Uh, there is a minimum requirement for low-income housing that each town has. This project would fulfill that requirement, and the connection you're talking about is that if this project does not happen, it's likely we could end up with another type of development project um to fulfill the forty B that could have a lot of families and kids, and that's the effect that it could have on us, because we could have a sudden increase in students in the town.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I mean, personally, I don't have any problem with, I would like to see us create more uh low and middle-income housing, um, and some people are opposed to this because it doesn't create any in the process of of putting us below the forty B threshold again. One of the issues about forty B is that uh we don't have any, we have next to no local control over what the project looks like. Um, you know, all of our specific zoning issues and building code issues go out the window to default to the state code and and building uh building codes, so, um, you know, it's not look, we, our job is to educate kids. Um, you know, we uh we would do that gladly. Um, the uh, I just think it's important that people understand that you know, if you're if you're looking at this purely on cost, you need to know the connection between uh the TIF and the added expense of educating an extra hundred and fifty kids or whatever it might be. Um, you know, which is twenty grand a kid. So, you know, you, that's what, uh, quick math, three million dollars.
So we're strongly encouraging citizens to educate themselves, to attend town meeting and to vote.
Yeah.
But I, we've had so many other, um, you know, this is the one of maybe four Junction Village, or if you combine CPA funds, probably six articles that have come over the last four or five years, I can't even keep it all straight, and I don't think the school committee has ever taken a position on any of those articles.
Take a position.
Okay.
I don't think we I don't think we've even brought it up, and I think the only reason I felt compelled to bring it up was this is a money discussion for many people.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, so if you're going to talk about a money discussion, then, you know, understand the financial consequences.
As you know, there's lot of wants is to this whole thing, as you know, and it's it's updating regularly with changes and updates and amendments, and I'm sure there'll be some new information tonight at FinCom. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah. And I'd also thank Wally for bringing it up, just because at the very least, I think it's important that all of us in the school committee are aware of the ramifications of various projects on the schools potentially down the line, so.
But I mean, right, and just a final note, because I think Wally's comment is very well taken, but we've had many planned residential developments which are going to contribute new kids to our schools and um other building activities which we have to pay close attention to, because you know, a dribble into Thoreau is a problem, it's pretty full.
Yeah.
So anyway.
Yes, we need to give an eye on all of those and be aware of all of them, definitely. Okay, good, so while I do want to take us back then to Article thirty, and I don't know, do you want to do a quick high level of it?
Um, I don't, Brian's not on the call, right?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't, I'm not.
I can screen share it if that's helpful.
Yeah, that's probably helpful. And I have to admit, I'm not that I'm in favor of it, and once I became in favor of it, I my hard drive's filling up. So effectively, what we're doing here is um um, we're trying, this is tied in with the electric bus purchases, or the goal of purchasing electric buses uh through the VW program, and uh uh what he is proposing is that the town uh transfer, borrow, whatever, wherever they can bring, wherever they deem appropriate to pull the money, and that's part of what the FinCom discussion is about tonight, I think. Um, two hundred thousand dollars to supplement the purchase of uh of electric buses, and we can, we can receive five, a total, and Jared, you may know these numbers better than I do, five hundred thousand dollars from the VW program. It can be used for one or two buses. It can pay pretty much for the whole bus of one, but we could get two buses, uh, and, you know, we would still, we would, we would have to spend um well, two buses are going to run what, almost a thousand?
Yeah, each bus is I mean, they fluctuate, but each bus is approximately three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
They would pay eighty percent of that.
Yep.
Then we get up to five hundred thousand for two buses, so we would have to come up with approximately another two hundred thousand plus.
Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seventy. Right, right.
And, you know, I mean, that, you know, obviously, we've talked a lot about buses and our need to uh uh, you know, we, our desire to go electric, but our need also to be mindful of our budgets, and uh, you know, we can buy almost three buses with two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And, you know, so for us to spend two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to buy one bus effectively um is, well, I mean, the numbers are a little complex just because of the eighty percent versus five hundred thousand dollars, but um, the long and short of it is, we would end up with the ability to add two electric buses to the fleet, and uh which, you know, certainly is in line with the town's professed sustainability goals, and uh um, as we remember, and seems like a long time ago now, I don't know if it was the spring or the fall, but we were talking about this. Um, and uh uh Mothers Up Front was very strongly in favor of electrifying the whole fleet. So I think this so that's what's in front of town meeting, and uh I think it would be beneficial for us to support this. That's my personal opinion.
Other opinions?
Uh, I have heard Mr. Folds' presentation, I was more than impressed. Um, I know many people were involved, but his his efforts over a long period of time and the thoughtful analysis he's given to the proposal, I I found very, very persuasive. Um, he also, help me out here, he also uh proposes that the Bus Depot support charging uh with, correct me if I'm wrong, a capital article, is is that so?
Uh, yes, well, uh, I don't, you identified
Town managers
You identified it as free cash originally.
So the town manager's amending his capital budget and has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the infrastructure.
So the idea is if we're going to do infrastructure work at the depot, don't do one-off solutions, prepare for a longer-term uh transition toward an electrified
So I'll make a motion, just so we can move forward, I make a motion that the Concord School Committee recommend affirmative action on Article thirty.
A second.
Uh, sorry, is it just for Concord, or is that?
This Concord Town Meeting.
It's Concord Town Meeting, true, but the the regional committee could, well, I guess it would just
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Probably just should keep it to Concord.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Then further discussion on this, we have I'm in support of it, I'll put it out there, I won't go into detail.
Uh, I mean, I should say out loud, I've publicly said we helped to create the article and certainly are not opposed. Um, we didn't initiate it, but we worked very closely with Brian through all of this, and certainly would be happy to have the grant maximized more than we were able to the first time, and building the infrastructure is quickly going to be an issue, um, so I'm glad we've been talking about that, because Jared, what can we charge now, three buses?
Uh, three, yeah.
Three at most, so once you get to the three, that's it, we need an infrastructure upgrade, so.
Right. And just to clarify too, the VW grant is for Concord. So the electric buses are Concord.
Okay, so it'll only be Concord buses anyway, okay, good to know, perfect. Um, okay, good, any any further discussion before we vote? All right, then, for Concord, uh, by roll call, Johnston?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Booth?
Hi.
And about I, so passes unanimously. We've taken a position on this, an affirmative action position on Article thirty. Thanks for the overview, Wally, that was helpful, and Lori, thanks for pulling it up for us. And thank you to Brian for putting this together, if it passes, we will certainly benefit from it. Um, great, so I think that covers our town meeting articles, we just have a couple of uh action items.
So uh
You want to take this, Wally, it's a CC?
Yeah, why don't I do that? Um, so we, that, the, we have a, an agreement with the Concord Carolina Teachers Association on a one-year contract uh with a one-and-three-quarter cost of living salary increase. Um, the MOA dictates a memorandum of agreement under uh dictates a lot of some details about this year in particular, so that the rest of the contract is being left with the exception of some language cleanup, uh, left pretty much unchanged. Um, uh, either that or there's there's some stipend changes for coaches that are driven by a formula. Um, so what's in front of us is to effectively also approve this contract, it was ratified I think we were notified today.
A week, almost a week ago, it was a week ago, yeah.
It was before a meeting, but it was not this meeting. Um, and uh, so that's uh that's in front of us, and that would wrap up this contract negotiation, again, it's a one-year contract, uh, and then we'll see him shorter, because in about three months, you'll start negotiating another one. Um, so the motion would be that Concord Carolina School Committee votes to approve a one-year contract with the Concord Carolina Teachers Association, putting a one-and-three-quarter percent cost of living salary increase. May I have a motion of that effect?
I wonder if you might move it, Wally, you were leading the negotiation team, and it's your last meeting, and we know how supportive you are of our educators.
Thank you. Um, I'll make a motion that the Concord Carolina School Committee votes to approve a one-year contract with the Concord Carolina Teachers Association, including a one-and-three-quarter percent cost of living salary increase.
I second the, second the motion. Thank you, Wally.
And, uh, you know, Court was uh negotiating partner on this, and you're And, you know, Court was our negotiating partner on this, and you're in good hands going forward between this and the CTA process and all the little ones you've done. So any discussion?
Want to thank you both.
What's that?
I want to thank them both. Yes.
That's all I was going to say. In terms of discussion, just a huge thanks to Wally and Court for running this and also to the CCTA and their negotiating team. I know all of you spent a lot of time together and it sounds like it was a very collaborative discussion and process, so thanks to all of you.
Thank you. And yes, the negotiations have, even though it was a traditional bargaining process, I think we have found a way to become very collaborative in in our approach. And that was the goal, if you remember back when this started and it was just going to be a regular negotiating process for a three-year contract, we were proposing to the union that we do interest-based bargaining like we did with the CTA the last time, last, last year. They.
Wally, that feels like years ago that we had.
Doesn't it? They chose not to do that, but, you know, in the, in the same light, wanted to proceed with some of that spirit involved in our negotiations. And I would say it was. And, and, you know, we had some very heartfelt discussions about some things. My guess is they'll come back up. So again, this is, when we ran into COVID, the decision was made to to focus on this year. And again, the, the goal, part of the, if you're, the CTA did a one-year, a three-year deal with a I forget the exact, was it a four-year deal with a one-year?
It was a three and a one.
Three and a one, right. And so David, we're negotiating with them to extend theirs to here because we, our goal was to get on the same cycle. So we're going to maintain being on the same cycle, assuming that there's a ratification by the CTA. And which, you know, was one of our goals and that we saw it in this process. And hopefully there'll be some semblance of either a new normal or normalcy creeping into what we're doing by the time we get to ratifying a new three-year contract for each next year.
Yes, thank you.
So do we roll a call?
And we need to roll call for both committees.
Yeah.
Do it for us?
I will do it.
I think you just need the joint, the regional committee.
Oh, regional, sorry, yeah, it's not for both.
So, Booth?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Out.
Hi.
Stoffy?
Hi.
Johnston, I.
Great.
So the other item we have to do is vote to approve a FY twenty-one salary increase for non-union And the motion there would be that the Concord and Concord Carolina School Committees vote to approve FY twenty-one salary increases for non-union employees.
So moved.
For both?
Is that for both?
Thank you for both, I'm sorry, for both.
Second for both.
Thank you, any discussion?
Only thanks again, but this time a huge thanks to all of these non-union employees who we're approving this for, who have really gone above and beyond, especially in the past few months, and getting us to yesterday and today, which were big days. So big thanks for passing on.
Yes, absolutely. The work that's been done by people to get us to to where we are and to be able to have the kind of success we've seen in the last two days is extraordinary. And we know that, not that they were going to go very far anyway, given what's going on outside of the school system, but it would, you know, it's really been been a lot of work in a time when people hopefully recharge from, you know, an arduous school year and, you know, people have not had that opportunity this year to the same degree. And, you know, we are eternally grateful for their sacrifice for time they might have had with their families and time they might have had on their pillow. We we are bearing the fruits of that labor now and just another indication of, you know, great people we have working here in both districts.
You're here.
So no further comments. Take a roll vote, this again is for both. Booth?
Aye for both.
Aye for both.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Stoffy?
Aye for region.
Wilson?
Aye for region.
And my last school committee vote, not for both.
Great. Before we adjourn, can we, Wally just said most of it, but let me just, can we just say a quick congratulations to Lori and all the administrators and all the teachers and the building and grounds workers and all the staff, I mean, all the people who made this happen today and yesterday, and we'll hear more about it next time we talk. But, you know, I got to see three drop-offs and pickups today and and joy and enthusiasm and welcomes outside. And it was just incredible to watch. So we can talk more about it later, but I did want to just say thank you and congratulations and so much more, but I'll leave it at that.
I will just say every, I spoke, you know, obviously, I've been out in the schools the last two days and have been in every school. And every administrator looked at me and said it was totally worth it. And I think, you know, I don't think there was a better place for us to land today and yesterday. And it's not going to be easy, but getting in and seeing that the processes overall are going to be solid, they need tweaking along the way, some of them. But overall, really successful, the support of this community, we, all of us, because so many parents are driving, all of us have been out at these drop-off and pickups and people literally just rolling down their windows and thanking us as they bring the kids in and pick them up. And the outreach has been enormous. And I tell you, we appreciate every bit of it. So, because we are tired and we are really relishing that we got to this point. So it's been a great couple of days and more to come, more challenges to come. We aren't fooling ourselves on any of it. But this was the goal, and no matter what happens now, this was the goal. Because no matter, if we end up remote again, this is, this is a better way to be going into that if kids have had some time in school. And, you know, fingers crossed that won't, we won't get there or we won't get there anytime soon. So, thank you, yeah, we'll share more on Tuesday. While I'm glad you were around to be part of the opening, that feels appropriate, big deal closure.
Absolutely, I'm glad I served the extra five or six months or whatever, but.
Yeah, a little fruit of your labor too.
I want to welcome Alexa and Fatima to the committee. And I certainly feel good, you know, they'll be serving. And, you know, I hope you all end your school committee careers with, you know, kind of feeling that I have about my experience on here. I'll miss you.
Well, we're deeply grateful to you, Wally. I hope you know that, but we'll continue to say it because we continue to mean it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We're still going to drag you over to join us at town meeting. But since that's not a big broadcast of us, thank you again for for coming to this extra meeting that we, you didn't even think you'd have to come to.
No.
And boy, everything else above and beyond.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
All righty.
All righty then, why don't, why don't you ask for a motion to adjourn, Wally?
I have a motion to adjourn both committees.
I want to continue talking with Wally. No. Yes, so moved for both.
Second for both.
All in favor?
No.
We're going to do a roll. We're going to do a roll. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Haffey?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye for both.
Aye for both.
Booth?
Aye for both.
And in a practice, as Dad, Anderson?
Exactly.
And Johnston, I for both.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good night.